Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council and of course change of the guard tonight, a partial guard. So, welcome. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Lovato, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the audiences, this information, we basically have two meetings. The first one is to go through some, a simple one of the old council and then the new council will be brought up and sworn and then we'll have a separate meeting for that, which will be relatively short tonight, so just wanted to let you know. Roll call, please.
Benado.
Here.
Goodall.
Here.
Grego.
Here.
Lopez.
Mitte.
Here.
Miles.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Approval of the agenda, any changes from council?
No.
Have motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call vote.
Benado.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Grego.
Yes.
Mitte.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. We have nothing on the public hearings, on item five. Item six unfinished business, six A, Trinidad Fire Department, 2018 to 2020, union contract opener. What that is, is just that periodically on a yearly basis, there's reopeners for our, some of our unions, in this particular case, it is the Trinidad Fire Department. Could have a motion, please. Second.
Second.
Discussion, Mike?
Sure, council, members of council, this is one item that when we approved all the others, we actually missed the fire departments, they didn't have their stuff in, so it's basically the same as all the others, so. Unless you have any questions?
Questions from council, Mr. Potting? No, sir.
This has always been the same thing they had before, no changes or nothing been different, is that?
That's correct. Nothing changed.
The question I had on that was, I think, in that increase, was there the 1% that they have to contribute as well?
Oh, yeah. So, the fire department pension plan is in separate tiers for every firefighter, so their commitments to the each retirement fund are differing for each firefighter. So, when the state goes through with their policy or whatever, they come up with their legislation, we'll figure it out then, but it is the 3% overall, like the rest of them.
Are we still in compliance with the state or do they come back and adapt? Like you said, I think it was 3% or was it something that we talked about before?
Yeah, the state is trying to pass some legislation to make it up to 10% that way.
But we're still being compliant with that?
Not totally. If they, if they pass it, it's an unfunded demand date that we'll have to deal with in the future.
And that's something that, you know, the policy committee that I've been attending up in Denver, they've been talking about that and there's still some maneuvering that they're still having to work on when it comes out, so that may be going forward this year possibly, so. Any other thoughts? Call vote, please.
Benado.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Grego.
Yes.
Mitte.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Before we go on to adjournments, I just wanted to make any final comments to ongoing members, Mr. Potting? Good luck, thank you for your service. We said all, personally, maybe you said, okay?
Thank you, and from me as well, I've learned a lot from both of you and I appreciate there's not too many people that come up to ask for this job. It's usually take, take one step forward and the line goes back instead of forward and you all did and I really appreciate it. Good luck and good health in the future.
Rusty?
Just wanted to say thank you all for the guidance and, and help that you give me when I was a newbie up here and I'm gonna miss y'all terribly, it was an honor and a privilege serving with you both.
Thank you, Rusty. So I'm just saying, you know, Benado, I know you've been on this council for many years, but thank you for your service and, you know, you've brought, you've had some pretty good points and you keep us on our toes and that's okay, but anyway, we appreciate everything that you've done for our community and just thank you very much. We're gonna miss you, you know, especially in the finance department, anytime, anytime dollars come up, guess what, or contracts come up, you're the, you're the first that we come up.
Great voice.
So, if you'll put it this way, can we contact you again, you know, if we, you can always call? Anyway, we're gonna miss you, thank you, thank you very much. Motion to adjourn this session, please.
So moved.
Second. Call a vote.
Benado.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Grego.
Yes.
Mitte.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
I'd like to say one more thing for one meeting, you know, our last council meeting we had, had to pay respect by council members and the mayor and the city staff and that, that really made me feel good and I'd just like to say that, you know, I thanked a lot of people who've voted for me for many years, but I forgot one important person. And that one important person is my wife, Tamia. We'll be married here 43 years, the 12th of February.
That's my birthday.
And all I wanna say, all I wanna say is I love this city of Trinidad and I love my wife. Thank you for, thank you.
I kinda read my party comments last week, or just the last meeting of the year and, but again, it's so nice to, I mean, really listening to all these smiling faces up there, maybe not for a month, but. Anyway, thank you, especially, thank you. All right, yeah.
Where's Aaron?
Where's Aaron?
Get his candy from him too. Make sure you get his candy soon.
Joe? Joe, take care of yourself.
You too, guys, thank you.
Is that chair open?
Kinda hard to do, you know?
Okay, at this time, we are going to get Mr. Brok up here, if you please come up to administer the oath and start with the mayor, you know, we've got Aaron Williamson and then Aaron Ogletree and then Franklin Chu as council, these four, so if you want to come up here.
Okay. Just trying to get it in the order he said.
Thank you for being here.
Yes.
Return hand. I, Philip DiRico.
I, Philip DiRico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
By the ever living God.
By the ever living God.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the faith, faithfully, duties of the office of the mayor.
I further swear.
I further swear.
To support and uphold.
To support and uphold.
The Home Rule Charter.
The Home Rule Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Trinidad.
Of the city of Trinidad.
In the capacity of mayor.
In the capacity of mayor.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Thank you very much, thank you for being here, okay?
Joe, you need to sign it?
Yeah.
I have to. Is that all?
That's what I do.
Under.
Okay.
Yeah, I watch TV on there. Yeah, I'm paying you here for it. You'll learn after the first time.
I, Aaron Williamson.
I, Aaron Williamson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
By the ever living God.
By the ever living God.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the office of city council member.
I further swear.
I further swear.
To support.
To support.
And uphold the Home Rule Charter.
And uphold the Home Rule Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Trinidad.
Of the city of Trinidad.
In the capacity of city council member.
In the capacity of city council member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Which one are you taking?
You're taking good chair.
A lot of chair to fill.
Aaron Ogletree?
I, Aaron Ogletree.
I, Aaron Ogletree.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
By the ever living God.
By the ever living God.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Colorado.
And the State of Colorado.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
I further swear.
I further swear.
To support and uphold.
To support and uphold.
The Home Rule Charter.
The Home Rule Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Trinidad.
Of the city of Trinidad.
In the capacity of city council member.
In the capacity of city council member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's your hand? I, Franklin Chu.
I, Franklin Chu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
By the ever living God.
By the ever living God.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Colorado.
And the State of Colorado.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
I further swear.
I further swear.
To support and uphold.
To support and uphold.
The Home Rule Charter.
The Home Rule Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Trinidad.
Of the city of Trinidad.
In the capacity of city council member.
In the capacity of city council member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's your hand? I, Franklin Chu.
I, Franklin Chu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
By the ever living God.
By the ever living God.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Colorado.
And the State of Colorado.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
I further swear.
I further swear.
To support and uphold.
To support and uphold.
The Home Rule Charter.
The Home Rule Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Trinidad.
Of the city of Trinidad.
In the capacity of city council member.
In the capacity of city council member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's your hand? I, Franklin Chu.
I, Franklin Chu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
By the ever living God.
By the ever living God.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
And duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
I further swear.
I further swear.
To support and uphold.
To support and uphold.
The Home Rule Charter.
Home Rule Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Trinidad.
Of the city of Trinidad.
In the capacity of city council member.
In the capacity of city council member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's your hand? I, Franklin Chu.
I, Franklin Chu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
By the ever living God.
By the ever living God.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
And duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
I further swear.
I further swear.
To support and uphold.
To support and uphold.
The Home Rule Charter.
Home Rule Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Trinidad.
Of the city of Trinidad.
In the capacity of city council member.
In the capacity of city council member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
I just wanna know, come the rookie gets, pick a chair and. Thank you. One more time. Franklin, is that where you used to sit?
Nope. I remember it well.
Better.
Me too.
Before we move on, I just wanted to say we're gonna have another short meeting, we're gonna have an executive session at the end of this meeting shortly, but if you would stick around, there's a lot of eats and treats out there, so if you wanna stick around and that executive session will probably last maybe about five, 10 minutes if the box is gonna be rather short, so we'll be allowed to stick around and enjoy. Roll call, please. Well, before we get on, welcome to city council, okay? Roll call.
Goodall.
Here.
Grego.
Here.
Mitte.
Here.
Ogletree.
Here.
Chu.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Item two, approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call vote, please.
Goodall.
Yes.
Grego.
Yes.
Mitte.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Chu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, appointments, appointment of Mayor Protan. Now move to open nominations for Mayor Protan.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Is my honor and privilege to nominate Karen.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay? None? Call vote, please, on that, or a motion to approve? Ms. Karen Gregor is Mayor Protan?
So moved.
Second, okay? Call vote, please.
Please take the second.
Kill him, Chu.
Oh, okay. He's on it. Goodall.
Yes.
Grego.
Yes.
Mitte.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Chu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Grego.
Upstee.
Mitte.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Chu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three B, appointment of municipal judge to, for Ms. Pamela Nelson to a two-year term as a court of, as a court of record, record, law degree is required and that's why we have her here, she isn't returning, so it's gonna be for a two-year term, so I need a motion. Second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? None, call a vote? Well, before we do that, we actually, I'll, we'll call a vote, please.
Goodall.
Yes.
Grego.
Yes.
Mitte.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Chu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three B, appointment of municipal judge to, for Ms. Pamela Nelson to a two-year term as a court of, as a court of record, record, law degree is required and that's why we have her here, she isn't returning, so it's gonna be for a two-year term, so I need a motion. Second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? None, call a vote? Well, before we do that, we actually, I'll, we'll call a vote, please.
Goodall.
Yes.
Grego.
Yes.
Mitte.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Chu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
I, Pamela Nelson.
I, Pamela Nelson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
By the ever living God.
By the ever living God.
That I will support and constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of municipal judge.
Of municipal judge.
I further swear.
I further swear.
To support and uphold.
To support and uphold.
The Home Rule Charter.
The Home Rule Charter.
And ordinances of the city of Trinidad.
And ordinances of the city of Trinidad.
In the capacity of municipal judge.
In the capacity of municipal judge.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Judge, thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Item four, policy items and staff reports, we don't have anything tonight. Item five, petitions or communications, do we have anybody signed up to speak? Miss Ida Sparr?
I used to get real mad when I had red hair, but getting high, so I'm all. Okay. Well, what I wanted to do, Mrs. Lovato confirmed to me that two and a half years ago, the city of Trinidad, I promised her $10,500 to try to keep the kitchen, soup kitchen going and she, she wouldn't come tonight because she said she, now she got turned down. Well, this is what happened meanwhile. I was down there, I helped the soup kitchen a lot, because whenever I get some change or whatever, I put my part in there. I mean, everybody gets hungry. Well, this is what has, is gonna happen to her now, she thinks. My father is gonna take half of her building, which he says that's not enough to keep all the food and then whatever people give to feed all these homeless people. I realize that these homeless people should go out and try to get a job or something, but I guess, you know, they, they've been raised whatever or however, so anyway, it's, it's, it's a different world, now it's a different world. But if we could put something together, I would like to sell my building and she says this is what happened, this is what they told her, that she was paying $500 a month to the Catholic Church and then they, they say, well, they already took a little bit of the building away and she says, well, but I'm, they told me that if I only just kept half, a little quarter, that they would go down to a dollar a month. She says, but that's not good enough for her because she won't have any storage, so I mean, I'd like to see something come up, maybe help her out, but with this, we talked about my store. Is there anybody that you guys could recommend me that would like to buy the store and we would try to see if we could put up the soup kitchen over there and I think they'd have more than enough room to, to try to do some good business?
My recommendation is if you wanna get with Mike and talk to him about that, see if he has, or city manager, if he has any recommendations, okay?
Okay, and then.
We'll talk to him. Make up arrangements.
Yeah, and then also, I'd like to talk a little bit about the streets. We have a street up on Seventh Street and I've had to help probably seven or eight people try to get up that hill because the city of Trinidad, they, there's two guys on the truck, one guy's like this and the other guy's spreading out a little sand once in a while and so there you are, these people are all stuck, have to back up down the hill in order to go around because there's not sweeping the snow. Well, this is another story. Went to Raton, I have Reynolds in Raton, went to Raton, the day that it snowed, it was seven inches high, okay? For the day that I went to Raton, there was a lot of snow. The next day I went to Raton, Raton had swept all this snow down the sidewalks, down the sides of the roads and it was clear. The next day after that, they got their maintainers and took everything out of the middle of the street and here in Trinidad, we still have some of that in the middle and nothing straight on the sides and people have fallen and maybe you could try to see if you could help a little bit more on the streets, that's all I'm asking. Because I, you know, a lot of old people, and I'm old, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item six, six, that's our consent agenda, agenda. Uh, six A, approval of payroll, December the twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen through January the tenth, twenty twenty, to the tune of three hundred eighty thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Item B, designation of public places for posting of notices of meetings for, and that's the city hall and the library, correct, Audra?
Correct.
And we also are posting that online, correct? Okay? Uh, item C, reappointment of Ms. Jean Delisho to the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Delisho, I believe, here in the audience.
Yes.
Thank you for, uh, reapplying. Could I have a motion, please, to, for the consent agenda?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Call a vote, please.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Mateh?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williams?
Second.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, public hearings. We haven't heard tonight. Wait till next time. Uh, we have no miscellaneous business, which is item eight. Council reports, uh, which you did?
Nothing to report. Nothing to discuss.
Okay.
Congratulations, folks.
I have nothing to report. I had a historic Main Street meeting today. I wasn't able to attend. But I all want to give kudos to staff. I just mentioned to Mike one day how nice it would be to have refreshments after, as for a small reception. And staff ran with it, as usual, as they do every time. So thank you, staff. That's really, it's beautiful out there. Thank you so much.
No, nothing new, certainly, but that was great mail there. I have nothing.
Okay? Okay. Do we have some items?
I have some.
Go ahead.
I'm, um, just wanted to briefly say that I'm really thankful and humbled and honored to be able to do this. And the three things that I said that I would work on, including public safety and public relations and public improvements, are the things that I want to work on. And I'm lucky because everyone on this panel wants to do that too. So I'm just, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Um, I did, I did wanna just, uh, say thank you to everyone and, um, just acknowledge the honor that this is to be part of this, uh, process. Look forward to working with everyone here, um, in the city and the citizens of Trinidad to continue, uh, the path that we're on. And just, um, look forward to the future.
And I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, we're welcome to our new council members. And, uh, we'll work real hard to continue the path, like Mr. Williamson was saying. You know, we have a lot of progress that's being made in the community. And, uh, there's some other things that I know that we all want to do, and we just have to work together to make some of this stuff happen. And I, we'll have a group of council, and move forward with moving us to Trinidad and come in the direction that it has to go, so, uh, welcome and go again. Uh, do we have some items? Uh, just to let you know that next Monday, we have a work session for union council members, and that'll probably be at, what, four or five o'clock? Somewhere around there, five, five o'clock?
Is that just for new members?
No, this is our regular work session. And, uh, you know, we have some, uh, open boards and commissions. I'd like for you to consider it. One is the urban forestry, one is historic preservation, and the space to create oversight board. So, I'd actually talk to you about the water conservancy, but I guess they already appointed somebody that's specific. On, uh, the twenty-second and the twenty-third of this month is the Action Twenty-Two legislative days in Denver. And, uh, I know that there's a few of us that are going up. Yes, there's actually, uh, three members of council are scheduled. We've got you registered. Um, it's kind of at the end of the registration period, so I don't know if anybody else, uh, wants to attend. Please let us know. We'll get you registered. What that is, that Action Twenty-Two is, we belong to a group. And what they do is, they come together once a year in Denver, and it's an opportunity to, uh, attend some meetings that are out there in Denver, to meet legislators, uh, and other things. And there's some other things that we're planning on, and we'll bring that forward at our work session next week as to some things that I'm requesting, so. It's a Coalition Twenty-Two World Cup, that's what it is. And there's actually a couple of other groups in the state of Colorado from like the western parts and the northern parts of the state, they kind of all come together at that same time. So it's not only Action Twenty-Two, it's two other groups. Uh, just to let you know that next Wednesday, Wednesday, uh, I'm going to do, they've asked us if we could do a presentation for the Chamber of Menchon next Wednesday. And I'm going to do a presentation. And what that's going to be about is the, uh, the structure of the city as well as services that we offer. That's what I'm going to be covering. We're also talking about a retreat, probably in the next month or so. I think it'd be a good opportunity for all council together to get together and kind of throw some ideas and thoughts about around at what we'd like to, to work on. So keep that in mind. If there's anything in particular that you would like to bring forward at that time, write it down and we'll have it going forward. Uh, also, probably the, uh, either the first or the second week of February, uh, I would like to do our State of the City again. And that would probably be, uh, no later than the tenth of February, so. That's something I've done in the last couple of years. Audra, I think you had mentioned that there was some SIRS training for council members or actually council, so what date is that?
It's the second work session of January on the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh? Twenty-seventh of February?
Of January.
January. January. And that would be a good opportunity to kind of get updated as to what, you know, we need to do as council members and requirements. And what they do is they will bring down one or two of their attorneys probably to, to speak to council. That was it. I think council, you guys are already at, I was gonna ask you guys if you have any comments, if you made some comments. Thank you for those. Looking forward to working with everybody. Mike?
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just want to mention that, you know, the state is in legislative, uh, mode. And there's the Action Twenty-Two legislative days, and, uh, CML is having a legislative workshop on February thirteenth. It's a ways out, but I just wanted to let you know about that. Another thing is, um, certified, uh, local government is, uh, the Colorado Preservation Inc. is having a, uh, conference. And the Corazon of Trinidad was on, uh, the, uh... Help me out, Georgie. Anyway, we were, uh...
Here she comes.
Thank you. Can you apologize? So, uh, the Corazon of Trinidad is being taken off.
Yes, they're, the Corazon was on the most endangered places list for Colorado Preservation Inc. for the last ten years. And they wanted to remove it from that list this year. So at their annual conference, they'll be, um, bringing that up at the Endangered Places Conference. And it brings some more recognition to Trinidad.
And that's a good thing.
Yes.
That's a good, yeah. And at that council, uh, that conference, there's also a presentation on our space to create and the Fox Theater, so that's, uh, great. Um, if you, if you mind, uh... Also, uh, we have the opportunity to apply for a History Colorado grant. And Georgie has the application. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for, uh, a survey to be done. It's kind of a requirement that the, uh, History Colorado, Colorado History has so that, um, we move forward. We've done all their steps, and it's, it makes it easier to get more of their grants, so, um... The deadline for that is January fifteenth, so, uh, we're gonna ask the mayor to sign that. It's just the application for now. If we're rewarded, we'll bring it back to you if there's no problem.
Any questions for that?
There is no match to that grant either. It's a certified local government grant, so either you get it or you don't. Thank you.
Thanks, Georgie. Thanks for helping me out there. And then, uh, just wanted to let council know that I will be, uh, taking, uh, next week, uh, fourteenth through the, um, seventeenth off. My daughter's getting married in Albuquerque, so I'll be out there. Thank you.
Counselor?
Mayor, council members, thank you. I don't have anything to report, but I just want to welcome you, council members. This is a very different look. Welcome.
Okay. Okay, on to item eleven, executive session for a conference with city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four two. Or B, ongoing litigation. Motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Call a vote, please.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Mateh?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and retire into the conference room. Rest of you people, if you want to go out and enjoy yourself for a little while, wait till around...
Save me some cake now.